The host, let me see if I can give that position to someone, but I was sort of waiting until Otis got on so that I could give it to him. Otis, are you there?
Let me see if I can get, where are we? There we are.
Yeah, Kathy, you lost the host again.
Whoops, sorry.
I am the host according to this at the moment. Are you hearing me, the mayor?
I am hearing you, mayor.
Okay, I don't know how, I'm, I, I can, if you give me a minute, I can either turn it over to Ashley or to, aha, we have a City of Greenfield host. I don't know who it is.
That's probably another counselor.
I think, well, I think it might be Otis, but I think that's okay.
Not as good?
I think we might be okay.
It could be Counselor Dolan. Did he come back?
It could be, I don't know.
Because that's how he showed up last time at City of Greenfield.
Otis has signed in as himself, so he is not the other City of Greenfield.
I'm guessing it was Counselor Dolan who is now gone, and you're the host again, Kathy, so hold on.
It's a host.
So every counselor that hosted anything in a month has been the host. Oh, no, the mayor's the host again.
Correct.
I am, let me see, if I can turn this over to, which one, Otis or Ashley?
I think Kathy.
Clerk's office would likely be the best. We've been hopping around.
Okay, the one that reads, City Council Mayor?
Right, so, um, I can't recall, I rarely host, so I can't recall how I get that done, but.
I actually think, I actually think we are okay if you remain as host.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, it, it would be fine.
Okay.
You're the host, Kathy. Nope.
Someone else is now logged in as City Council.
Does anybody know?
Counselor Dolan's the host now.
I keep, I've, I've logged out four times and logged in as me, and it keeps logging me back in as City Council. Does anybody have any insights?
It's, it's something to do with the saved passwords.
Um, yeah, Tim, are, are you, this is Amy Prady. Are you using the, like a Cisco desktop application on a laptop, something like that?
Hmm, uh.
How are you logging in?
Yeah, I'm on a laptop.
Yeah, so, if you're using the desktop application, it's actually kind of complicated to find where you log out and just, uh, but there's like a settings icon, um, within the desktop app, and, you know, it looks like that settings, uh, gear, and you can log out there, and then when you go to log back in, there's this tiny, tiny little text that says, enter as guest, or something like that, and you need to select that instead of, because if you don't say, enter as guest, it will automatically log you in as your last, um, saved, uh, account.
Yeah.
Counselor Dolan, um, it's, it's Dan. Um, I was able to do it by changing my name. I couldn't get out of it either, but I put myself back in as my, you know, email address, and then it defaulted to my other password. Like, you know, you know, Counselor Dolan at, you know, GreenfieldMask.gov, you know, then it swapped over.
For the sake of everybody on the call, Tim, are you, are you okay being the City Council host for today, and then we can figure it out afterwards? I just know that there's a lot of folks here and hoping to get started.
It's.
Is that a problem?
It's fine if it's not interfering with anybody else.
I don't think so.
I don't think it's a problem either, Ashley.
And I appreciate your flexibility, Tim. You are in charge.
Well, let me know if anybody wants anything done.
Um, I see we're at 5:50, so we're gonna go ahead and get, um, the party started. Really like one of those Zoom, uh, commercials that we've been seeing popping up, uh, during COVID times, so. Appreciate the humor as well. Um, all right, so.
GCTV is ready.
Okay, I. We live? We're live, okay.
Just let me know.
All right, we are ready, um, and whoever's in charge of recording for the council, um, we can go ahead and hit cord now. All right.
Tim, that would be you.
He's all, yep, got it. All right, GCTV, all set. And, sure time. All right, so hello, everybody. Uh, thank you so much for coming to this special meeting. I think it's a really important special meeting where we will have an opportunity to receive an update on both, uh, the library project as well as where we stand with our fire station project. Um, and so I see some familiar faces and some new, and, um, I appreciate you all being here. So this is a special meeting of the Greenfield City Council. Today is September 10th of 2020. The time now is 5:52 PM, and we will call this meeting to order at this time. We are virtual, um, and this meeting is being audio recorded and video recorded by the City Council and GCTV-15. If any other persons present are doing the same, please notify me at this time.
Yes, ma'am.
And, thank you.
Excuse me, President Stempel, who was recording?
I heard, I'm looking for the name.
Thank you, Jayden.
Jayden Gratzig, perfect. Um, and Jayden, are you affiliated with anybody, or are you just recording? Great. The luxuries of being remote sometimes, right? Um, great, and at this time, we'll do a roll call of members, please. Clerk Scott.
Thank you. Counselor Jarvis?
Here.
Counselor Gwynn?
Here.
Counselor Disorder?
Here.
You know, just hit here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Oh, I'm here.
Counselor Gilmore?
Counselor Gilmore texted me. She tried to log in, but her signal is weak, and I said I would speak for her during roll call. She tried, but she couldn't do it. She's away from home.
Okay, so she is not in attendance. Counselor Wheeler? Count.
I'm here, but it's terrible. I'm gonna log off and log back in.
I'm here, Otis.
Uh, he said that his connection's bad, and he'll log on and log back in.
Okay, Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Hirschfeld? Counselor Hirschfeld?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Elmer? I don't see that Counselor Elmer is logged in. I will come back to him. Counselor Forgji?
Here.
Counselor Ricketts?
Present.
President Stempel?
Present.
Counselor Elmer? I still do not see that he's logged in. Counselor Wheeler?
I'm here and I'm present.
Thank you. If I see that Counselor Elmer logs in, I will try to tactfully interrupt to let everyone know.
Counselor Wheeler's the host.
I'm, Sheila Gilmore is here now.
Sheila Gilmore, Counselor Gilmore is in attendance. We.
I also see Counselor Hirschfeld in participants.
Yes, he did say he was here.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, Counselor Elmer is the only counselor that I do not see as in attendance tonight. Madam President, you have a forum.
Wonderful, thank you, everybody. Um, so at this point, we're gonna suspend the rules of procedure. Rules of procedure, eight, order and disposition of business, so we can move forward with our discussion tonight. Uh, we'll begin with a library project update, then we'll receive a fire station project update. Uh, we'll work over to Director Gilman, who'll provide a financial overview, and then we will have a question and answer session for counselors. This is purely information gathering for the council. We do not have public comment, uh, tonight. And so really, the goal of tonight's meeting is to listen, to learn, um, and then have our questions answered live tonight. And then counselors, this will give you a week before ways and means, and before the council meeting, to think of any other potential questions you might have. The reason we're having this special meeting tonight, Counselor receives presentations the same night that we have to take a vote. Um, and Counselor or Vice President Wheeler, and I really felt that it was important that counselors have more than just minutes, um, to think of questions or, or receive questions from the public. Um, and so, yeah, we will get, ahead and get started. Uh, we were sent two documents from Director Gilman, the library project update as well, or, I'm sorry, the fire station and a financial overview document. In terms of the library project, who will be presenting to us tonight? Is that you, Mr. Palata?
Yes.
Yes.
We need a motion to suspend the rules. We need a second, and we need a vote, please.
We hear a motion to suspend the, we have a motion moved by Counselor Dolan. Is that a second by Gwynn?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody is echoing.
I believe it's Dan.
If you aren't speaking, can you please mute your microphone, please? Somebody is causing some kick.
Okay, I think it may be.
Otis, you're now the host. Can you quickly, yeah, okay, good, we muted everybody, good job. Thank you very much. Uh, without, okay, so we have a motion by Counselor Wheeler, uh, Counselor Dolan, a second by Counselor Gwynn. All right, the motion, all, sorry, now I'm distracted, the ringing in my ears. Do, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Recession, saying none, all right, rules have been waived. Thank you, Kathy. Um, so, of course, so that being said, uh, we will move over to our library project update, and I welcome Mr. Dan Palata, um, to the floor.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. I hope you can hear me okay. I do have a couple of slides to show you, if you allow me to share. Um, and I can walk through the library project if you don't want to go through that, which is fine. I can just give you a verbal update. It's entirely up to the, to, to you on what you want, uh, want me to do.
If you have some, I'm a huge fan of, of offering visual as well as audio, so if you have a visual accompaniment to your update, that'd be wonderful.
So I will share if I am allowed to.
Um, yep, there you go.
There we go. I'm sharing Microsoft, oh boy, but yet it didn't come up, did it?
There we go, I see it.
Can you see it okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. So, uh, the, the library project is, uh, is doing very well. Um, we have, uh, completed what's called design development. So there are three major, uh, portions to a project's schematic design, design development, and construction drawings, which basically are the blueprints that get bid on by the contractors. Uh, we have completed design development. We have received a, uh, estimate for design development. We have plugged the estimate into our budget, and, uh, I can report happily to the council that the library project is on time and on budget. So, uh, from a financial standpoint, the appropriation that you have given the library has allowed the library to be completely designed by the Library Building Committee and its subcommittees, and, uh, we will not be doing a value engineering or a reduction of space or a reduction of, uh, of anything at this point in time. So we're moving forward with construction documents. That being said, I'm gonna give you a sneak preview of the library. So, um, this is our floor plan for the first floor. Uh, it's probably hard to see, um, but, uh, children's is on the left. Uh, new books are in the middle, uh, new, uh, meeting room, uh, large meeting room in the middle, uh, periodical in the front corner overlooking Main Street, and a conference room also on Main Street, with a set of stairs going upstairs, and an automated material return system, uh, and a work area for the staff of the library. The second floor, uh, has, uh, a lot of adult, uh, a, a, adult fiction, uh, and, uh, book stacks as well as quiet study areas and reading areas, and the entire building, uh, on this access is open to light, along with light monitors that you'll be able to tell, uh, when we get through, uh, to the sections. Elevations, which are not in color and not with material, but show the basic outline of the building, uh, show, uh, the juxtaposition of solid and void in the building, and the materials as they're being, as we're moving forward with our construction working drawings. And if we took a saw and cut right through the middle of the building, on the top, those are the light monitors, uh, that will be bringing in natural light. Um, if we, if you, you saw it, uh, in the, in, where there isn't a light monitor, you'll, you'll have a flat roof. If you saw in the opposite direction through the light monitor, uh, you'll see that bump up on the top, and, uh, we're starting to put in all our mechanicals, as you can see in the, in the lower right-hand corner. From a visual standpoint, uh, this is what it would look like if you were flying down, uh, flying down the street with the post office to the right. If you were standing, uh, on the sidewalk looking up. If you were looking towards the old library, which is on the left, and just out of the picture would be the post office on the right. Looking back towards where the, the fire station is today, but from the street. And that's what we have to show you for where the library is from a visual standpoint. I don't know how to un, un, uh, undo this. End of slides, we'll click to edge it. There we go. So, somebody tell me how to get out of this.
I believe if you.
Start sharing, there we go.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I believe there's a button right at the bottom.
I'm used to Zoom, Counselor, I'm used to Zoom.
At this point, I never know what platform I'm on, so I feel you.
We, we, um, we have a brief presentation for a reason. We are on target. Um, we are working towards a, uh, bidding environment in late February and early March, um, so that our bids are due by the end of March, early April. Um, we clearly can't start construction in April, um, as they're, you know, we, we're cognizant of the fire station. Um, there has been tremendous progress in the past month between the two committees, uh, in moving forward with solutions, and the Library Building Committee and the Library Project stands to, uh, as one unified city to come up with a solution to keep the library project moving forward while the fire station project moves forward.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna pause on questions for now and move forward to, well, is your intention, Dan, to stay on for the duration of the call to the Q and A, or would you prefer to take questions now?
Uh, I'm here to serve whatever you think is most useful.
I'm thinking that, well, because questions that they might ask might be relevant to the update coming from the fire station.
I will.
Yeah, so if we can hold, I'd really appreciate that.
No problem.
Um, and so we have a fire station update, uh, and I am, uh, Mayor, are you providing that update? Or is somebody from the Building Committee doing that?
A little bit of both. I thought, um, Butch would lead off, and then I would, um, provide, um, the background perspective of how we, how we got here tonight and where we need to go from here. A brief one, uh, not a lengthy one, because the counselors have already received a document with more detail. And then obviously, it could go to Neil or Neil, does that mean? Hopefully not. It can go to Neil or, and, uh, then to Liz or vice versa, so Butch, if that's okay with you, Ashley.
Sure, and so my question too is similar to Mr. Palata's presentation. Are we going through the presentation that was sent, uh, earlier? Or will it be, is there, does it make sense to have the presentation live on the screen so we can follow along, is my question?
Um, what I have to say doesn't, sorry about that. Uh, what I have to say does not depend on, um, there being pictures up at the moment. Liz has her slides, and Neil definitely has his, and both of those are very important.
Great. All right, without further ado, uh, Public Safety Commission Chair, Mr. Hawkins, take it away.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, Madam President and members of the City Council. My name is Butch Hawkins, and I'm the Chairman of the Public Safety Building Committee. And on behalf of the committee, I'd like to thank, uh, President Ashley Stumpf Ray and counselors for holding a special meeting for the Building Committee to update counselors in an informational format on the many areas of our work since the committee was formed in January of this year. Our primary work has been to seek a project manager and a designer, and we have. And additionally, we have sought locations for a permanent fire station, temporary facilities for the Fire Department to allow construction of the library, and we've received proposals, and we are working towards finalizing sites for the project. The committee has also formed a subcommittee to work on a temporary facility solution for the Fire Department while new construction takes place for the library. Now I'd like to turn the floor over to the mayor, who will provide background for opening remarks, and followed by Neil Joyce, our project OPM for the status update on the permanent and temporary fire station sites and preliminary funding numbers and needs. And then that will be followed by Liz Gilman, the City's Finance Director, who will speak to the city's finances and additional funding under a bond vote. Thank you very much, you all, and, uh, Mayor, you have the floor.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chairman Hawkins, and thank you again, counselors, um, and President Stempel for letting us present this to you. Yes, at long last, you have a, uh, update on the fire station, and it, it has taken us a while to get here, but we are delighted to be here and able to prove, present to you, um, where we are up to date. We're here tonight, uh, to give you that up-to-date on the status of the fire station, uh, project as of today, uh, where we need to go and what we need to do to get there. As, uh, you mentioned earlier, President Stempel, it is strictly informational. We give you as much information as you need and to allow you to ask questions before you have to take any votes to authorize any additional spending on this project. Um, we do anticipate coming back to you in October at the earliest. So this amount of time will give you an opportunity and time to get your questions asked and answered, and it will give us time to begin negotiations for the property for the permanent fire station, and to give you fleshed-out, uh, plans and numbers for the temporary fire station. We have those numbers this evening, but we want to make sure that they are, um, as close to what we will need to spend on the temporary as possible. So just understand that some of the numbers you see this evening are, are, um, still preliminary, but we'll be putting them together more succinctly as we go forward. So, uh, it, before I turn this over to Neil and Liz, who will give you that most up-to-date information, um, I'd like to leave you with three key points to keep in mind as you mull over the next, uh, the, the information uh, for the next few days and weeks. Um, number one, uh, Riddell Street is no longer the proposed site for the fire station. Uh, that site was contingent on a $2.5 million earmark from the 2018 Economic Development Bond Bill. Uh, and it was to clean up, uh, known environmental contamination on the site uh, in and near the warehouse building that would need to be removed. Uh, pre-COVID, so January and February, um, I worked, uh, as the new mayor with the EOHCD. That's the Executive Office of, um, Housing and Community Development, and our legislative delegation to get that money, uh, from the state out of the clutches of administration and finance, uh, this year, so we could begin, but due to COVID-19 consequences and uncertainties of state finances uh, of, uh, for the remainder of this budget year and beyond, the OH, the EOHCD, uh, stated to me directly via phone call that they would not be giving us that money. So, without Riddell Street, the Fire Station Building Committee, which includes myself and Chief Ray, and along with, uh, many other citizens and, uh, town, uh, experts, you know, in their field of what we will need going forward, similar to the Library Building Committee, um, had to search for and locate other locations for a temporary and permanent fire station. For reasons that were never fully explained to me by Mayor Martin, uh, he put the $10 million budget number into the FY20 capital budget to fund the hard costs only for a new fire station on city-owned property on Riddell Street. Building on that property was dependent on a set of factors that changed dramatically over the past two years. Those factors are primarily, we lost the $2.5 million earmark. Uh, thus, the $10.10 million amount that was authorized in May did not include money for a temporary fire station, for the purchase of private property for a permanent fire station, and for soft costs and overage amounts that are typically included for this type of project. So, at this point, we are left with working under those factors and trying to resolve them satisfactorily and as quickly as possible. And as Butch mentioned, we have, um, actually made, and so did Dan, we've made, um, quite a bit of progress, although it seems like it took forever to get there. Um, the second point is, these two projects are Siamese twins. They are literally tied at the hip because of their location, which has caused us, uh, to begin, uh, on the. Fire station before the other, the library, can be completely built out. So what we're working on now, um, is we need to secure a location for a permanent firehouse. Currently, the property, um, in mind is Main and Coombs Avenue, the Open Air Market. the open air market and its numerous buildings that are owned by the same owner. We need to also purchase, build and move into temporary structures, hopefully before mid to late summer of '21. The Temporary Building, Temporary Firehouse Building Subcommittee took a vote this afternoon before your meeting to recommend that, that the temporary be put on the Hope Street parking lots. Again, I want to emphasize temporary, which is, as we know, a relative term. The library needs a timeline that allows them to at least break ground by April 21st, 2021. And we will work hard towards achieving that date. But the possibility may exist that the city will have to go to the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners for an extension on that groundbreaking date. Hopefully, we can arrive at a plan that doesn't allow us, doesn't require us to do that, but it's out there and we have to consider that. And regardless, there may be a need for the existing fire station to operate and coexist with the library construction for a short period of time. The third point is, the presentations made to you tonight will show that we will need to come to you in the near future, likely at your October meeting, to vote on additional funds above the $5 million to build the fire station. I'm sorry, above the $10 million to build the fire station. Also, at some point in the future, I will need to come to you for authorization to spend money to acquire the permanent fire station property at the agreed upon negotiated price and terms by both parties. And it would be nice to think we could have that done by the October meeting, but I, it's real estate transactions being what they are. I don't want to, I don't want to hold myself to that or hold us to that. So I hope that you'll get the information that you need tonight and you'll support us in your efforts going forward, in our efforts rather, going forward with the fire station based on the current situation and new information. But by all means, feel free to ask any questions at the end of this meeting or later. All of us are here, including Chief Strahan, our project manager, and I believe the architect, to answer any of your questions and give you whatever information you need at any time between now and, and when you need to talk about. And that's it. I could certainly turn it over to Neil.
Yes, well, we'll, we'll give it over to Neil. I just wanted to remind those who are using materials tonight to present. So Mr. Palata and Mr. Neil, because I don't know your last name.
Joyce.
Joyce.
If you are able to, please forward those presentations to the clerk's office. We have them on record, that would be great.
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
What are we doing here?
We should be on.
Everybody's got that, I hope?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. So as you are aware, we have two projects adequately described as Siamese twins. The existing library is shown on the slide to the bottom right of the frame. The new proposed library is directly above it, also facing in a budding Main Street directly. And the outline in red is the existing fire station, approximate locations. But nonetheless, you get the idea, we have a conflict inherent in the projects and we are working on possible solutions to eliminate that conflict and keep things on a timely schedule moving forward. So the options that we've investigated are in settling on the location of a temporary station through lease or purchase, also delaying the library project, which is not something that we want to do any longer than absolutely necessary. So in May of 2019, well, excuse me, 2020, we issued an RFQ for the lease of temporary space associated for the fire station, temporary fire station, excuse me. We received one response to that RFQ. It was related to the Well Street and Main Street parcel in numerous configurations. And in addition to that, we looked at the Main and Coombs location. We also looked at High School Fields. We looked at the site of the Crusher in the northern part of Greenfield. We investigated, oh, at least eight other sites, which were not responsive to the RFQ. Ultimately, the recommendation to the committee was to take no action due to financial restrictions on the lease option. And shortly thereafter, in mid-May, we issued a separate RFQ for acquisition of the permanent fire station location. We received five responses, July 10th, for those, for that option. They were the Well Street Parcel, a combination of the Wells and Main Street Parcel, the Open Air Market at Main and Coombs, the Congregational Church at 43 Silver, and the Red Barn located over at River Street. Between the acquisition of real property and the lease, there have been several items which have changed and affected us. We originally were tasked with evaluating permanent sites based on the use or the intended use of those sites for a combined public safety complex. We have since refined our thinking and reasoning to include a fire station only due to financial restrictions that would prevent enabling a police station phase until 2030 or later. Further, as the mayor touched on earlier, we did not receive the earmark for Riddell Street. Thirdly, we had a meeting with Berkshire Gas and they have suggested that there would be no net increase of consumption for any new or temporary facility that would go in utilizing gas as the principal means of fuel and energy. So we've determined that alternative or supplemental energy will be required at all sites currently under consideration. In the interim, we did make an initial offer to the current owner of the Wells Main Street site and that offer was not acted upon by the current owner. So I believe that the mayor and has been granted permission to speak with the second ranked location for the permanent station, that of course being Coombs and Main, as previously referred to. And then the last is the initial engagement with the MBLC requesting an extension, which was suggested that it would not be looked upon favorably by the Board of Library Commissioners. So it presents us with the requirement to construct and occupy a temporary fire station to remove ourselves from the library and not further impede progress on that project. Along with that comes the additional request for funding that the mayor had previously referred to. So we, we went through, I'll, I'll spare you the details of the, the RFQ process and the evaluation. Suffice it to say, we had nine criteria, evaluated each site based on those criteria, and then came up with a ranking system for the sites. The first ranked site was in fact the Wells Main Combined Parcel and the second ranked sites was Main Street and Coombs Avenue. So we're proceeding down the line as those evaluate, as those proposals are evaluated. In terms of the temporary fire station, we have located a spot on Hope and Prospect Streets. It's currently a multi-tiered parking area for the city as well as for local and abutting businesses. We're in the process of refining that and bringing recommendation back to the full building committee, which we anticipate will be done on the 24th of September. And upon that time, we will be moving forward with the design and impacts that that will have to said parking area. The temporary station, as it's configured right now, is intended to be made up of two separate apparatus structures. There are the larger two squares on the right-hand half of the parking lot. And in addition to that, a temporary building, which will be either one or two structures to support living accommodations, equipment accommodations, the day room and officer accommodations when firefighters are not on call, as well as general administrative functions of the station. In terms of the phasing and the timeline for the temporary station, we are looking at finalizing our decision and bringing that to the committee this month, as well as finalizing the architect's contract and completing our initial site investigations related to the Hope and Prescott, I'm sorry, Hope and Prospect Street sites. We are anticipating a temporary station design, which will occur over the following six to eight weeks. We're looking to go out for bids over the holidays in December, January. And then we're looking at mobilizing the contractor in the early part of the spring, contracts, submittals, et cetera. Orders and deliveries would be confirmed for the spring. We will do the initial setup of the structures and the temporary trailers, as well as the utility connections, followed by a fit out of the trailers and the apparatus bays with anticipated occupancy permits issued by the city sometime in July. We would then move out of the existing building, salvage any remaining equipment over the late summer, early fall, and turn the building over to the library project for demolition. And I will say that as with all of these schedules, timelines, budgets, they're all very preliminary. We, we want to improve on these whenever possible and we're taking every step that we can along the way to minimize any time impact to our sister projects. So just a little bit about some of the sites that we've evaluated. This is what we're calling Zero Well Street. It is the rear portion of the Wells and Main Combined Facility. Some of the pros of this site, it was of adequate size for either a temporary or a permanent building. It's centrally located right off of Main Street. There is gas service presently at the site. This was the previously identified location for the combined public safety project and it provides a unique opportunity for redevelopment of the Main Street corridor. The cons that we had seen or initially evaluated were the need to remove the existing structure, the cost of acquisition, as well as potential phasing premiums with two-story or multi-story facilities. This was a typical or a initial layout that we had deemed for the Wells location. It feeds back apparatus bay with access directly onto Wells, a two-story administration facility and a two-story support structure for the apparatus, a net total of 22,000 square feet. And I believe there are 26 parking spaces associated with this scheme. Again, pros and cons, a very simple design. We believe that we're providing adequate parking for the fire station and the facilities. It's good public access. There is gas on the site and again, it is a centralized location. The cons, two-story designs typically have increased costs when compared to single story. It is a shallow lot, does not provide the ability to have drive-through apparatus bays, which are tremendous asset to the fire personnel. It does lead to an increase in gross square footage due to stairs and elevator requirements for a multi-story structure. The site largely will be developed and paved, so there will need to be underground, underground stormwater system requirements. And as a supplemental funding source, we are looking with the mayor's office at a CBDC grant. You'll forgive me, I don't remember what the acronym stands for. It is a existing fair condition building. And as I understand it, the funding is increased as the quality of the existing structure decreases. So this particular project or location is ranked a fair condition, so it's less likely to receive or would be a reduced funding recipient. Second option for Well Street would be a similar apparatus bay. There's fewer parking with this scheme. It does feature a single-story administration building, so that eliminates some square footage and it reduces the overall square foot of the facility down to 20,000 plus square feet. Again, pros and cons, single-story design. There is gas at the site, although limited. The detriments are, as I said before, the back-in bays are not preferred. And again, similarly, the underground stormwater system and the fair condition assessment of the existing property. Second site under consideration is Main Street and Coombs Avenue. That's currently the open air market. Our initial assessments, it is a central location right on Main. There is appropriate size and geometry for a new fire station facility. The lot size is just under one acre and the temporary trailers or temporary structures could be accommodated on this property as well. It is a narrow site in terms of the phasing on Main Street. There is no existing gas service to this building or facility. It, it does require the cost of acquisition and phasing may be required. We'll touch a little bit more on that as we move through. So again, similarly to the second option on Wells, this is a single-story administrative function located close to Main. There is a drive-through apparatus support as well as a two-story support structure between the two. This does provide response and return in a single direction and a good flow throughout the building. In terms of the pros and cons, it is a single floor, single-story structure and it reduces cost while increasing usable areas. It's good public access, access directly onto Main Street. There is adequate parking provided in the schematic. It provides drive-through double-deep bays. Again, the response is directly onto Main. The centralized location, the lot size is favorable. And this particular property is listed in existing poor condition, which would make it likely for, likely eligible or an increase in eligible funding. The cons are, it is a very tight site with the building as it's conceived. It is very likely that we would have to make some infrastructure improvements to Coombs Avenue. The connection from the administration areas to the apparatus bay is somewhat limited. The, the structures are actually offset. The parking located along the existing response drive is less than ideal. There, again, there is no gas on the property. There is a right-of-way to an abutter-owned garage within the property that would need to be respected. We do believe that we can work around that without impacting it. There, there would be one or two existing structures that would remain on Coombs Avenue. Those are residential buildings. So there would be abutters, abutter concerns as well as residential concerns. And again, with all sites. And again, with all sites, underground stormwater system would be required. Second option would be a two-story administration building and support along with three double-deep drive-through bays and two back-in bays. The net increase to the square footage brings this facility up to 23,500 square feet. It reduces the available parking to 21 spaces. Again, pros, directly, direct response to Main, appropriate levels of parking, the double-deep bays and the drive-through access to those bays is favorable. Again, a very tight site, limited green space on the building. And again, poor condition, making it more likely for an increase in eligible funding. The two-story design is an increase in cost. We talked about that on Wells. There is an increase in gross square footage due to stairs and elevators. The improvements to Coombs Ave is a cost that was not anticipated as part of the original project, so that would have to be taken into account. And again, underground stormwater, the same right-of-way to the abutter garage, the residential tenants and the gas restrictions. So we put together a financial snapshot of what this project may look like. Again, the cost of acquisition for the sites are as proposed by the current owners. They do not reflect any flexibility in those pricing that exists as part of our ongoing negotiations for purchase. It does include premiums for site demolition. I'm sorry, for demolition of the existing structures, as well as costs associated with improvements to Coombs Avenue. We have estimated the cost of the temporary station, assuming it lands at Hope and Prescott over a period of approximately 30 months at $1.7 million. That includes the rental of the apparatus bays, the rental of the office trailers, as well as the fit-out equipment relocation and restoration of the site at the conclusion of its operation as a temporary facility. I touched on the timeframe earlier. The only difference that we would anticipate would be an additional two to four months of construction time based on a two-story design versus a single-story design. We're looking at move-in and relocation of the, at the temporary station during the third quarter of '21. And we'd be looking at the estimated project completion for the overall station in the second or third quarter of 2023. Again, not having a site is somewhat handicapping regarding overall project cost. But we've estimated the building at $500 a square foot for the single-story option and 525 a square foot for the two-story design. Along with an estimated 25% for soft costs, design and construction contingencies, as well as escalation to the start of construction. And the overall project is somewhere estimated at 17.1 to 20 million, depending on which option is ultimately selected. So that concludes my portion of it. And I will turn it over to Liz if somebody can guide me how to stop sharing my screen.
There should be a button at the bottom. One says stop video, and I think where the share button was, it might now say stop share.
Uh, not shared. I am not finding it.
It was, it was at the top for me, Neil.
Oh, it's at the top.
I got out of my point.
Stop sharing. Gotcha. Thank you.
I see Councilor Elmer has joined. I'm looking for you, Director Gilman. There you are. We'll move right into your presentation and then we will move into Q and A.
Slideshow. This could be a summary, really, of what you've heard from both Mayor Weida Gardner and Neil Joyce. And it's just an update on the status. I gotta move someone here so I can see the screen. Okay, so it just says where we are, how we got there, and the financing. Okay, as of January 2nd, 2020, as Mayor Weida Gardner stated, we were at Riddell Street, which is a city-owned property. We had a state earmark of 2.5 million for site remediation. And we have an appropriation of 10 million authorized. So what happened? We lost this state remediation earmark. The Riddell Street remediation costs were between 2.5 to 4 million. So resulted in the RFQ to purchase property that Neil referenced, as well as Mayor Weida Gardner. Temporary fire station housing cost. The long-term housing was not in the original 10 million estimate. The soft costs were not in the original 10 million estimate, which is like concept and schematic. And you can speak more to that if you have questions on that, as well as contingency and escalation, not in the original estimate. So as Mayor Weida Gardner spoke, we are requesting additional 5 million borrowing authorization. Property and site costs anywhere from 925,000 to 1.15 million. Temporary housing of 1.77 million. Soft cost, contingency and escalation, a total of 4.29 million. What, that's 7 million, not 5. Okay, so why 5 million? Well, as Mayor Weida Gardner said, this is preliminary. And we are continually working on flushing out and reducing costs, eliminating or reducing the temporary housing costs, seeking grant funding, both state and federal, and managing the debt service, which is what I'm going to speak to next. What does an additional 5 million mean on the debt limit? So the city's debt policy is to maintain debt service at 8 to 10% of the operating budget. The rating agencies, Standards &amp; Poor and Moody's, they like to see consistent debt service. They don't like to see a roller coaster of fluctuation up and down. And by doing, by maintaining consistent debt service, it shows the rating will is investing in maintenance and infrastructure. These ratings affect our bond and ban, that's bond anticipation note, interest rates. So for Standards &amp; Poor, our current rate rating is AA- and Moody's A1. Debt limit. So the debt limit regards inside debt. Inside debt is defined by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7. Debt limit is 5% of the city's EQV, which is the equalized valuation, the full and fair cash value of property within the city. Debt limit also only looks at inside debt. So our current bonded debt is at $18,792 million. Now, the debt limit, the 5% of the EQV, is $75,133.90. This is on 2019's EQV. 2020 is still under review with the Department of Revenue. So I was advised to just use the 2019. It could go up another million, well, not million, 800,000. The current authorized and unissued. So this is, these are projects that the city council has authorized. But we have not bonded for them yet. They may be projects that have started, or they may not have started yet. And the current amount, which I'll show you the detail on the next page of that, is $33,832,796. Now, this includes the 10 million that was already authorized for the fire station and the 19,005 that was authorized for the library. So those two projects are the majority of that 33 million. So the grand total of inside the debt limit is $52,624,796, which leaves $22,505,594 available under the debt limit. And I just want to go through the next page. This is a long list. I'll try and make it a little big, whoops. Little bigger. But this is everything, you can see the library here and the fire station here. The rest are are all authorizations done through the capital improvement program. But the bottom line total here of 33,832,796, this is the detail where the prior slide, current authorized and unissued. So that's where that comes from, inside the debt limit. The next screen, I thought, is somewhat useful for you in one regard. It shows the debt coming on and off for authorizations. And where I want to point out to you is that when the library is finished, completed, and we bond for it, we are able to rescind the debt authorization of the grant amount, which is $9.5 million. And that substantially reduces what we have authorized. This is a graphical representation of our current debt as a percent and projected debt with the, with the library and the fire station at 15 million as a percentage of our operating budget. the numbers for this are in a separate PDF that I sent, if you prefer to look at the numbers. But that's where it's pulling from. And you can see that really the highest point is 2029, and that's actually 8.4%. So the city is well within the policy of 8 to 10%. This next graph is, is the same concept, but it shows the debt by project. The purple is our existing exempt debt. That means it is debt excluded, and that is the high school. The royal blue color is our existing non-exempt debt. The orange, darker orange is anticipated capital project bond. The light green is the fire station coming on. The lighter orange is another capital project, whoops. And the light blue is the library coming on. And the green and darker blue are additional capital projects. But this shows how it looks through fiscal year 2030. I do have, let me see. I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but this, where do I share this? Uh, stop sharing. Okay, want to share a different document with you. Where these numbers are pulling from. And this may drive some people nuts looking at this. But when you look at this, all I want to do is give you a brief overview of what this means. So down here on the left is the fiscal year. This is our operating budget that we are doing.
I don't think your document has shared yet.
Yeah, we can't see it. Oh, I tried to. All right, I'll do it again.
There we go.
I'm sorry.
It's loading now. There we go.
Okay, you got it? Can everyone see that? So down the left is the fiscal year. And then the next column is our operating budget. And the first three years in the third column are actual percentage increases. You can see that we've very conservatively budgeted this down through here. And then we add our existing general fund debt. And the light green is the fire station coming on at 15 million. The library, the light orange, the library coming on at 10 million. And in between are various years of capital improvement program bondings and authorizations. And then you go to the right, you have a total combined payment. And these payments are, this is the actual debt service. It is principal and interest, both inside and outside. So this is where the debt policy is a little different from the debt limit. The debt policy is, is your total debt for the general fund, inside and outside. The blue column shows you the dollar increase in the debt service from year to year. The yellow column shows you the percentage of the operating budget that the total debt service is in yellow. And I just wanted, because I know you're going to be looking at this material, I just wanted to kind of help you with it a little bit. But this is where those numbers for the graphs are pulling from. And in case you were also wondering, I also put in where the fire station was at 10 million, so that you could see the difference. I don't know if anyone has any questions on anything.
Great. Thank you so much, Director Gilman, Mr. Joyce, as well as Mr. Pallada and Mayor Weida Gardner. Very informative. At this time, I'm going to ask councilors. Does the, this is a full house. I'm going to ask for you to acknowledge yourself if you have a question in the chat box, just to make sure we're not speaking over each other. And I can get us started to warm everybody up. So in terms of the, this question might go to Mr. Joyce. In terms of there being no existing gas at the Coombs Avenue, Main Street location, obviously, we're still in a situation where we're trying to figure out which site is best in negotiation, but what would be the backup plan for acquiring energy? Would you be looking at a propane source? How realistic is that for that large of a building? The lovely moratorium does hinder some progress here in the city. I'm curious if that's been considered.
So the, the normal course of the project design will be to evaluate all fuel sources that are readily available to the project and will come up with energy models that will dictate what would be the likely most economical situation for the city moving forward. But I suspect that it would be a combination of gas and/or electric. That's, we've seen a trend in that in the last several years, particularly in communities where natural gas availability is limited.
The, thank you. I see question from Councilor Disorder, please.
I have several, so I'm going to let other people ask, but this is for Director Gilman. When you presented the financial picture, I was well able to see how how the debt is retiring. When we were talking before, are you making adjustments in this for the increases that you were looking at in our total financial picture as far as OPEB retirement, et cetera, or adjust in that financial picture, looking at the debt? Is that correct?
So there is an escalator in there of two percent. Our prior presentations, the city council wanted that to be as conservative as possible because that would keep the range of eight to ten percent look small. So that's what we did was conservative. This addresses the eight, staying within the eight to ten percent range of the operating budget. What you're bringing in additional factors of what will everything else go up, correct?
That's correct.
And so we do have a retirement schedule that I believe everyone had received. If not, I can send it again. That does show substantial increases from year to year. I have advocated with even before a lot of the council members were on that the city establish a pension stabilization plan, even before any of this was in the picture, on which to draw for funding this retirement schedule. So I still advocate for that. And OPEB, we did establish a OPEB stabilization for certain aspects of the marijuana revenue, the cannabis revenue, and that also can be utilized to support ongoing increases in retirement benefits. So it's a good question, and it's very complicated in, you know, living within the realms of two and a half is basically what you're asking. So I don't know. I'm presenting between eight and ten percent. That is what I'm presenting to you, and the city falls well within that.
Councilor Disorder, I think that's you raising your hand.
Director Gilman, is it within the realm of possibility that with this unintended consequence, that anything that we may in this, because it was a pandemic year, some projects that we may have said we would like to bond for that have not actually been started or that we haven't bonded for, that maybe we've just done a temporary ban? Is it within the realm of possibility to put some of those on hold?
Well, again, going back to the department, some have already started and some have been just about completed, so we would have to, you saw that long list of the authorizations. We would have to review them one by one. Putting them on hold defers the cash outlay, but it does not change the authorization. You would have to actually rescind the authorization. So when you're looking at the debt limit, even though you put it on hold, it's still going to be on the debt limit.
Councilor Disorder is asking is about the rescinding of unstarted projects.
That would be something we'd have to go through one by one with departments and look at the status. A lot of the larger ones are already underway, so it's really some of the smaller ones.
It sounds like your answer is maybe.
Maybe. Sorry. I can't, you know, it's a possibility. And as I said, it would involve just going through that list, that long list, and seeing what has not started and is the need still pressing and it would take a financial order to city council to rescind it.
Thank you. I have more questions, but I'll let someone else go ahead.
All right, Councilor Elmer, please.
Well, I have to say my head is sort of spinning. We, you know, a month ago, we were looking at a police station and a fire station. And now, and we had a site chosen, and now it's a new site, and we have to do temporary. And I know it's been tough, but I got to say it's if for someone who fully supports the library and fully supports a fire station, a new fire station, you've put us in quite a pickle. And I guess I have to ask, is there a way to avoid building a temporary fire station, which sort of sticks out like a sore thumb? It's it looks like a waste of one point seven million dollars, and I wonder whether the funding source for the library, when they said that an extension would not be looked on favorably, is that the last word? And could we go back to our friends in Boston to Joe Commerford and Paul March and ask them to work for us and see if we can get, you know, a long extension, a couple of years so that we could, and that's one thing there, and I hope you can do that. Two, you've got ten million, but you can already start working, especially if you have in theory. And I guess we'll get closer to the real thing when you bring us the numbers. Anyway, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
I believe that question is directed towards either the mayor or Mr. Pallada.
I'd be happy to take a stab at it if the mayor wants me to. If the mayor doesn't, I will be happy to stand down.
I would like to address a couple of, I think there was questions in there. So I would like to address what I, first, what I think were your questions. First and foremost, the original offer that you had heard about or the original plan that you had heard about for Main and Wells Street was never acted upon by the owner, was never responded to. In the subsequent time, I met with both Lynn Welch, our financial advisor, and Liz Gilman, our finance director, and determined that it isn't feasible, wasn't feasible financially, to think of the two projects together. Not that we would be building them together, but that they would be that they would be financially feasible within a time period that made sense to also own, excuse me, the Main Street building, if that makes sense. If not, I'll try to further clarify. So really, what was determined is the amount of money that we are actually able to bond. And that money would be for a fire station only. It was always going to be building phase one of a fire station. And that is all that we're concerned about now. And we're concerned about in the beginning, the additional picture, including a police station down the road. If you paid attention closely to the slides or when you get a chance to look at them again, you'll see that the option to do that would not be financially feasible till well into the late twenty twenties, if not into twenty thirty. So in an effort to keep our costs low, keep the, that we know we have to come back to you for at a reasonable and manageable debt level, we chose to shift gears and also the fact that we didn't have a any kind of a viable counteroffer with which to begin negotiations. It was still never going to be financially feasible at what we might have been able to come up with as an agreed-upon price with the owner of Wells and Main. So it was determined by the building committee to really begin focusing on a property that would support the Main and, I'm sorry, that would support the fire station only. Two of those properties, the favorite property being Coombs and Main. And the second property being, we're in sort of round two of where we need to go with this, and the second property being at Wells Street only. So that brings us to here. That brings us to how we are, why we are making this presentation to you, one of the reasons. And with regard, I'm trying to think of what the their pressing question was. Oh, with regard to can we get away with not building a temporary? I think you have to understand, and Dan will support that, as will Neil Joyce, Chief Strand, and others. You have to understand that the library is on its trajectory, and that is dictated by the grant. Would they give us some leeway in that? Yes, but a matter of years would not be the case. So we could ask potentially for a matter of a few months for the for the delay in groundbreaking and the two projects to be put on a time scale that would allow for a groundbreaking on the twenty-first or some timeframe after that. It looks like, based on Dan's I'm sorry, Neil's slide, that that timeframe would be late twenty twenty by the time we would be able to totally vacate the library. I'm sorry, vacate the fire station so that the library could proceed with additional, with whatever it needed to do going forward. So I'm happy to expand on that if it needs to be, but I think Dan can his portion now as to why, as I said, there are Siamese twins, and they really do need to happen simultaneously.
If I may. Councilor Elmer, it's a great question. If we waited till the fire station vacated the site, the library wouldn't be completed until twenty twenty-five. And now, for that to occur, it would totally disrupt the funding cycle of, not only the funding cycle of the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, which operates on a five-year grant program where we've received our first of five grants. We're in line to receive our second in five, of five grants sometime in April, and our third of five grants in July, each grant in a separate fiscal year. When you interrupt a fiscal year, the Mass Board of Library Commissioners risks losing the money to A and F, which is Administration of Finance at the state. On top of that, we would have construction escalation in excess of the cost of the temporary library if you delayed the project that long. So the plan that the mayor and the fire station building committee has come up with, it does work for the library. We're hoping that they can trim a couple of months off it. And we're hoping that we can start in July first and not September first. But those are negotiations and actions that will occur as they move down the line with their tasks and we move down the line with our tasks. And I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Question from Vice President Wheeler.
Thank you, President Stumpel, but I thought that
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bill Moore was.
Counselor Gilmore. I had it highlighted, and then it wasn't highlighted anywhere.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Let me know if I need to speak up. I'm wearing earbuds. Sure, how I sound. This might be more of a concern than a question, and I'm not sure who this is directed at, but I remember there were, there was not a majority, but definitely part of our population was really concerned about building these projects together because of the cost. They were citing numbers saying that the, you know, cost projections for the fire department were not accurate. I have always been a supporter of the library. I have always been a supporter of the fire station. I stand by that. What I'm questioning right now is, now that it's come down to brass tacks, we're telling these people that these costs are going up, even though we've spent all this time telling them that they weren't. And I feel really uncomfortable with that. I don't know if this, you know, and again, I recognize that Mayor Weidgartner said earlier that former Mayor Eric Martin didn't tell her why these costs were budgeted the way that they were. But when people ask me, how are we going to support this and how are we going to be able to afford this? I've been telling them all along that we can do this because these are the numbers that were given to me, and now we're finding out that these numbers actually weren't accurate all along. And I just, I mean, I want to know, like, we need these, both of these projects to move forward. I get that. But I think that we need to restore some trust with our constituents, and I I'd really like to hear some feedback on that.
Well, I can, thank you, Councilor Gilmore. You know, I will, from the get-go, I don't, I say, you said rebuild trust, and so here we are having this meeting today. I don't think that anyone hasn't been transparent. I called for this meeting, and I believe every party came to the table excited to present to you an update. The problem I see with the project is that the fire department planning has been a little bit backwards. We were assigned a financial figure before we even were selecting a site, and so that is a past administration snafu, but it's also a symptom of working with the state on a grant. That's the way I understand it. I just wanted to jump in and say, I don't think anyone hasn't been transparent. I think we've just been working with what we've been dealt. I know that that's a trademark of what Councilor, Vice President Wheeler and I work and strive towards, is making sure that we are getting this council the information they need, being transparent, and making sure that we're working with the mayor's office. So we have the information we need to make decisions moving forward. So I just wanted to say that. And then I will, perhaps, I will ask the mayor either to respond or select the right person who who you think would have the right answer for that.
I'm happy to do an initial response, and I think certainly Director Gilman can can continue with whatever answer she feels is appropriate to Sheila's important question. As mentioned, the original plan that constituents were thinking of when they were also, when we were also thinking about the library was the site would be on a city-owned piece of property on Riddell Street. Thus, the city did not have to purchase property. That site was and it could possibly have held the temporary at the same time, although that seemed somewhat unlikely. And the backup plan there was for the GMTA-FRTA garage on Deerfield Street. That particular property for, as a temporary, I'm thinking, I'm saying. That property for a temporary is not suitable. It's barely suitable for the GMTA-FRTA garage that it is now. It would require a significant amount of money to upgrade it to a fire station. Plus, we have a, uh, a fairly long-term lease with GMTFRTA for that property. So I don't think that was ever a actual plan for that property, but it was a contingency plan. So, uh, based on Liz's, uh, presentation this evening, uh, she is definitely, um, and can support this, I guess, with whatever information she wants. We are, we are well, the, I would like to, okay, I'm gonna not try to talk over people.
Can somebody, can somebody please mute themselves?
Somebody needs to mute.
I think it's, it sounds like Dan Pallata. Yeah, okay.
Okay. He's, he's muted. The original pro, plan also, as stated earlier this evening, uh, did not include, um, money for a temporary. That's within the 10 million. It did not include, um, money for purchasing and, um, a private property. And it did not anticipate soft costs or other contingencies. This building committee for the fire station certainly looked at many other city properties that could possibly be used in its stead, and there basically are none, um, that are suitable, um, for, for locating a fire station on. That brings us to today, and it brings us to the reality of funding a temporary structure along with a fire station. It, it is, I hesitate not to say this, but it is in fact true. It is what it is. And, uh, Liz's presentation, I think, presented that, um, we are well within the eight to 10% that we need to still fund both of those, even with an additional $5 million. But Liz, if you want to amplify that, go right ahead.
Uh, no, I think you, you hit on exactly what I had talked about, um, that the temporary and property acquisition, that was never part of anybody's plan. And that's a significant part of the increase. And, and I think that that's where, um, Counselor Gilmore i- is, um, looking at this. But really, it's only the soft costs that likely should have been represented. But that's, you know, that, that's prior. I don't think there was a deliberate attempt on anything. In fact, the actual, in the, if you have a chance to look at Neil Joyce's presentation, the actual construction of the building is at 10 million in, in the scenario. So that, people were not trying to be, um, nefarious in this, um, in, in, in my mind, anyway. I wasn't here for everything, but, you know, I've had to work on putting this all together and trying to figure out the history of, of what actually happened.
Yeah, and just as a follow-up, I, I'm not trying to suggest that anybody was nefarious about this.
Okay.
I think the concern that really bothers me is when there are some folks who were telling me a long time ago, they were sending me emails saying, we can't afford this. I was telling them, no, 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 it's fine, we can afford this. And now I'm getting that, see, I told you so? And I, I want to give them a really good answer that's, that's easy to understand because, you know, this stuff is difficult. I think that, you know, we've got a brand new mayor who just inherited an administration from, you know, someone who had been mayor for 10 years. And so maybe, you know, Bill Martin had different information that was true 10 years ago that just, you know, doesn't apply now. I think we've got a really good team. I think that everybody is really transparent. What I'm struggling with is there are some folks who are saying that this was going to happen before, and now that it turned out the way they, they said, it looks like all of these nefarious things that they were saying were going on, you know, may have tr- and I, again, I'm not saying that it has, but it's just really easy for someone who doesn't attend all of our meetings and doesn't, you know, read all of our agendas to go, oh, look at that. You know, it's the simple answer, right? And that, I, that's kind of what I struggle with. I just want to make sure that we're maintaining trust with our, with our neighbors. But again, this might, this might just be a question that has no answer.
And it could, it, and I think that's part of it, uh, Counselor Gilmore. It all gets to managing a budget and making decisions on how you manage that budget. All sorts of things can happen in the future that impact a budget, and we can't predict them. So we, we know what, now what we have to manage. We've always had to manage debt. We have to manage the retirement. We have to manage the OPEC. Those are the knowns that we know we have to manage, but it doesn't mean that other things can't, that none of us know about, can impact us in the future.
Does that answer or satisfy your question, Counselor Gilmore?
Yeah, I think so. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how to respond to folks, but, you know, if people want to share things in the future, feel free to reach out.
Uh, okay. Question from Vice President Wheeler, please.
Thank you, President Stempel. I share Counselor Gilmore's concern, and I think it's important that we are transparent and admit that things did not go the way that we hoped would, they would, within this, this process. The certain site, uh, costs were wrapped into the earmark, and we lost the earmark. And when we lost the earmark, obviously, things tumbled. I don't particularly want to make excuses about that. Ways and Means was told in April that we might not, that $10 million might not be enough to build the fire station. And the fact is, it's not. So what I'm interested in now is what steps are necessary to see that everything proceeds in a manner that is fiscally responsible and that ends up with the outcome that I think the majority of citizens and certainly people in this room want, which is to build a fire station and a library on, um, whatever reasonable schedule we can find. So, um, my question is, we have an appropriation of, of $10 million, which is obviously plenty of money to buy a site and to outfit a temporary fire station. That, to me, is the priority, not, um, expending an extra $5 million to, to build the final, uh, to, uh, have the money appropriated for a permanent station. Because I think it's clear that this council won't, um, appropriate money, the, a, a further amount for the fire station without definite plans. And over half a million dollars has been appropriated in November of 2019 for definite plans. So I think from my standpoint, I will want to see plans for a permanent station, um, before I vote to make any further appropriation. So my question tonight is, how do we get a temporary, uh, station built and how do we do it on schedule?
I can address some of that, um, Ashley, if that's all right. Okay. You're, you're right, Otis. The important pieces that have to take place right now are, um, certainly are purchasing a property and for the permanent and building a temporary. And we're working on both of those pieces. The reason that we will need the additional $5 million will be to be able to go forward. Typically try to, uh, enter into contracts with other, uh, entities that you might have to enter into going forward while you are building the project. And that is, um, you try, you have the full amount appropriated, and I think that's actually good policy. As you could see from the, tonight's presentation, we are, we are indeed actually shy of, uh, some, um, additional money, approximately $2 million. We will certainly commit to trying to fill in, uh, using grants and other, uh, potential, uh, funding sources for that. But at a minimum, um, we need to cover, uh, the hard costs, the purchase of property, the building of the fire sta, I'm sorry, the temporary fire station, which is very important, and to the project and its, um, timeline. And, um, and then go forward with the, um, additional, um, using the additional money to get the finished, uh, at least the hard costs covered, uh, of the finished property. That is the best answer right now I can give you on that, um, from a, from a financial standpoint. Getting those fi, finished drawings are going to be, um, that you're requesting are going to be, when you, you say finished, I guess I need to have a, a picture of what that means because we need the site first before we can begin working on the drawings. And, um, we need to know how finished is finished. That takes, as I think both Dan and Neil can attest to here, that takes a fair amount of time. And, um, you know, you have to be able to hire engineers, you have to be able to do a lot of things. At some point, the money begins to run out. We are trying very hard not to bring us to that brink, but rather to anticipate what needs to happen even after we build the temporary and get the fire, um, department in there. The fire department should not be required to stay in a temporary forever, for one day longer than they have to. And they are certainly looking forward to having a new fire station to move from the temporary into, so.
Follow up?
I think she might have froze.
Move them. So we have, we have at least, uh, approximately two years. So that, that's how I would answer that question, but, I mean, um, for now, and I don't know if, um, Dan, I'm, I'm sorry, Neil or Dan or Liz want to add to that.
May, may I, may I just say a quick thing, if that's all right, Madam President?
I guess.
With regard to Sheila's comment, um, the fire station is going as advertised, and I, I would, I would also echo, um, the finance director's comments that, uh, the fire station is, in a way. I mean, a lot of factors have changed in that time period, and they're working through those, those factors that, including the loss of, of, uh, of the loss of the earmark and a change in direction from the previous mayor on where the temporary, uh, station was going to go, uh, if you go, eh, back to the Wayback Machine. So, I mean, I think, uh, I, 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 I think everyone's been open and transparent here, and I think we're all working really hard to save every penny. I know that Neil is, and I know that, uh, we are on the library side. So w- w- we're going to keep doing that, and we'll meet with council anytime you want to, to keep you informed of where we are.
I think what I heard from Vice President Wheeler that I haven't, and maybe this isn't a question more than a statement, but I think what we're asking for, and I, I say "we", meaning myself or Vice President Wheeler, because I'm kind of on his same page, is we're asking for flexibility. And so I've served on this council for almost six years, and for, for me, whenever we have a big project come before us, um, it's always this has to be this way. It's never, it's never, there's no flexibility in the middle. This is, this is why it has to be this way. And we can't sway from that. And so the fire station project has been up in the air and a little wishy-washy since day one because we have been very focused on the library project. Um, and so I, I kind of, like, that's what I'm looking for tonight, is like, how can we be flexible? And if the flexibility is holding until we have a final decision on, is it 5 million? Is it 7 million? Because the last thing I want to see is, is multiple requests for allocations coming before the council, because I don't think anyone here can agree that you're going to get it without that final plan. And so, Count, Vice President Wheeler has the follow-up.
Thank you, President Stempel. You, you kind of covered it, um, but I am in agreement with the mayor that, um, I don't want us to begin construction on a project that doesn't have, um, the full appropriation. And that is part of the reason that I think it's important to move on the temporary station now, because the plan outlined, uh, does not in fact identify all of the funds to build a permanent station. It identifies possible sources such as community development block grants, but it does not identify all of the funds. And I'm confident that they will be identified, but I think it's, it's going to take time that, time that might take away from our timeline that might push us into sort of a, a problem area with the temporary station. And I know that, um, I, I don't want to ask, um, something of the firefighters that is unreasonable, but I do believe that this council is committed to building the fire station, and I hope that, and think that they would be willing to work with us, um, to get what needs to be done, done in order to make the process happen. And that's, that's not a question, that's kind of me just following up.
Thank you. Counselor Gwynn.
All right, you can hear me now. I guess I wanted to echo off some of the stuff that we've been saying because I think we just need to know what's happening, and I appreciate this so much. But one of my big problems is, you know, we're talking about, a lot of these costs for the fire station came because we moved location and we didn't plan for a temporary, and I understand those because those were the unknowns. But who puts together a proposal of this nature and doesn't have any soft costs or any escalations in the original? It already put us behind before you go forward. I'm not saying, it's not this mayor, it's not this, but that's why I think we have doubts going on, is because we already had something that, that's standard. We're not asking for something unknown. There's always escalations, there's always soft costs. So I don't know if Director Gilman would know, um, why something of that nature would have been left off. It, it just seems to me that we already started knowing that we are going to have to add because that's standard, uh, protocol. Uh, so that, that was one of my questions, where that one had. And the other thing that I think we can't lose focus on when we start talking about the fire station, and maybe it's Chief Strahan could talk about this, is we sometimes, from the public and from the people that I've been talking to, they're getting caught up in the thought that, you know, because of the library, we have to move the fire station. But the truth be known is, we need a new fire station. I, I don't want to lose that part of this. It's not like, oh, because the library is coming, we have to tear down a good fire station. I think our chief could tell you what they're working with, which is, which is really kind of an embarrassment to the professionals we put there. So those are my two pieces right there. And then, you know, there was a question that we said, can't we ask for an extension? And, and the mayor said, maybe for a short time. I'm a true believer in, you get what you ask for. You, you know, asking you get, don't you won't? Um, I think we should ask for the extension on the library, back to that. And if they say no, okay, then the answer's no, but it's worth asking. So those are my three pieces.
Dan, was there a question in there, or did you just want to sit?
Why would a proposal have come forward, if anyone knows, without soft costs and escalations from the start? That's one question. And the second question would be, um, if, if the, if Chief Strahan has any comment on the need of a fire station as a question. I mean, can, can we live with the fire station we have for the next 20 years? Maybe that's the question. Thanks.
Irredundant question. Um, I saw the mayor was going to address the first one.
All I was going to say was, it, it sounds like actually both of those questions could- All I was going to say was, it sounds like actually both of those questions could go to Chief Strahan because he was there at the beginning and he will tell you how long the fire department and whoever was in there, in administration, at the executive administration at the time have been working on a fire station. And he can perhaps shed some light on the first question that you had Counselor Gwynn with regard to, why would anybody put forth a number that was soft cost only? And then, of course, he can speak to how important it is both to have a temporary or a temporary period of time and a fire station. So I'll turn it over to Bob.
Hello, can you hear me? So thank you so much for allowing me to speak. You asked some very, very important questions. How did the figure come forward? The short answer is you're going to have to ask somebody else besides me. I had limited participation in the numbers that were presented to city council. When I went to city council a while ago and the $10 million mark was asked, I was very clear that it was hard cost only. I will tell you, as your fire chief, I am very, very disheartened with the whole process. And I will take whatever responsibility there is, but I did not have input on the budget. Second, to Counselor Wheeler's comments, I do want to address this. And I've said this to you, Counselor. Not funding the firehouse or not having money appropriated for the firehouse is very unsettling for me as the fire chief. We're going to fast track a temporary facility, get these firefighters in a facility without an end goal, without an end date. Going into a temporary facility is not going to be easy for the firefighters. It is not comfortable living, it is not a comfortable situation, and there are many sacrifices and many complications with moving in a temporary facility. With that said, every firefighter in the Greenfield Fire Department stands ready to do what we need to do on the, what is in the best interest of the community. The community decided, voted overwhelmingly to support the library, knowing that the fire department was part of the equation. But now, things have changed, things that we didn't predict. Rydell Street still is the best site for the firehouse. It is not financially reasonable for us to go there. And so it changed. And so this is all compounded and all snowballed. And, you know, we try to be as transparent with the whole process, but it changes so very quickly. And everything that's been changed, the reason why it's been changed so quickly is to save money. We were at $21 million for the firehouse. We're down to 17 million, two of that is the temporary facility. We are working on, you know, the phasing of the facility on Coombs Ave was $900,000. Okay, let's go to town owned property. It's very limited on the town owned property that we can go to. And so every snowball, every softball that's been lobbed up our way, we have tried to change to keep the cost down. But the reality is, is that at some point you're not going to have a reasonable fire station that the community can be proud of. We are confident that the $15 million, the $15 million if that was appropriated, temporary aside, is enough to build the city an adequate fire. We're working hard to keep the cost down, we're working diligently to do what all you want. But if we go into a temporary facility without appropriation of funds, man, if that funds never get appropriated down the road, how do I look at my firefighters and say that I helped put them in a position for a decade? So I promise you as the chief of department that I will do everything, everything to keep every penny accounted for and every dime accounted for. But if we want to have a firehouse and we want to have an adequate fire station that we can be proud of as a community, unfortunately, these are real numbers. These are not made up numbers. And you know what? If we can do more to find cost savings, you have my promise as the fire chief, we will do everything possible to keep the cost down. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure if that answered, I guess. It did. I'm going to move on. I see a lot more questions, I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. Counselor Forgie, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to get back to, I think, what's on a lot of people's mind. And that's the taxes that we pay. And how, in these uncertain times, are we going to be able to afford what is being requested? So my question right now is to Liz. If we increase the debt to a $17 million figure right now, what effect would it have on our tax rate? Dollar amount and when does it hit? What, you know, our tax rate? When will we be responsible for that?
So first of all, the 17 million wasn't being proposed, it was 15. So that's what all the numbers have been based on.
I'm sorry.
I will get the tax rate for you along with the library. I think that's a good thing for you all to see. We have done it for the library, I'm just going to put it together. If you look at the debt schedule, you'll see when the bonding is projected at. And if you bond in '23, then the payments start in '24, you know? But there would be some interest costs for what you've expended as you go along, you know? So really, to do that definitively, I have to go with the bonded debt at the time that comes on to the, into the budget. And so I could do that. And yeah, it's all about, again, I think you're sort of sharing Counselor Gilmore's question as well, you know? You're along the same path.
As a follow up to that, can you tell me how the increased money would hit our debt ceiling?
That, I did go through that on the power, that's in the PowerPoint. So.
That figure is for the $15 million request?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Ricketts.
Oh, yes, thank you. I didn't know if you had called me earlier because I had to restart, so I'm sorry. To dovetail off of what Counselor Ford she was talking about, I wanted to know, are we anywhere close to 2.5 or are we fine?
During last year's budget, I assume you mean the levy ceiling?
Yes.
So, which is the $25 per thousand rate. We have excess capacity, which means within 2.5 of approximately 1.4 million. And then another million or so to the levy ceiling. So staying within 2.5 is an important thing.
Right, yes.
And, you know, I think that you make decisions all the time as counselors with the budget. And so you are deciding, you know, we have this infrastructure that we want to maintain, we have services we want to maintain, we have the retirement schedule, we have OPEB, all these things come together and you prioritize a new budget accordingly. So that's what I can tell you. We manage, we manage the budget, that's our jobs.
Right. And the high school maybe coming off, like, when?
No, it's closer to '24.
Oh, bummer. Okay.
I know.
So, and I just have a couple more follow ups. I guess so far, my biggest takeaways have been learning about the Rydell Street and what that really means. So hopefully that gets out in the public because I think that's really important. And that'll help them understand a little bit more about why this is coming back. The other one is the Well Street property, to know that we, you know, set a proposal and never heard back. And we didn't go keep knocking at the door. I think that's great, I think that shows how smart we are. I just don't want to look desperate to anyone because I'm sure the price goes up, you know, the more desperate we seem. So I'm glad that we may do Coombs instead. So I want to know two things. The property that's Hope Street and Prospect, that they're thinking about the temporary? Can a new fire station go there or no? Is there not enough room? Will it not work? Can it only be the temporary? And before whoever's going to answer that, I'll give you my last question is, when we put shovel in for the library, how long can the fire station stay where it's at as we start? The day for the library? Because I just want to know if there is a time period that they can still be doing their work and the fire station can stay where it is? I just want to know.
Counselor?
Yes.
It's a great question. And it's a safety risk to build while fire engine's running in and out. And not recommended. It also increases the cost of construction and right now we're right at budget. And the reason it increases the cost of construction is because we won't have a lay down area. So when you go back to OPM Joyce's chart of the site, you'll see that the fire station and the new fire station, it just doesn't work. We have nowhere to lay the steel down and unload it off the truck, no way to park vehicles. There's a lot of parts and pieces to this library that need space. Can it be done? Of course it can be done. Buildings are built in Boston all the time without any site. It just costs exponentially larger amount of money. And we don't want to go down that path for the city of Greenfield.
Right, I didn't mean long term, I didn't want it to be there through the life of the building.
No, no, no. Even in the short term, it's a problem.
Okay, thank you so much.
I think Counselor Stempel, President Stempel, I think Neil Joyce can help answer Penny's questions as well.
Thank you.
Neil.
So just to echo what Dan had said again, the footprint of the buildings actually overlap. So coexisting on the same site, as Dan pointed out, would definitely be safety and cost impacts both to the fire department personnel as well as the construction personnel on the library job. And if you could please endeavor me, could you please repeat your first question? Because I don't honestly remember.
That's okay, I could tell. I wanted to know, can the permanent fire station go on the Hope Street, Prospect Street area, you know, where you want to put the temporary? Can the permanent one go there?
So my, my understanding of that site is, number one, it's sloping. It's a multi-tiered parking area. And number two, it's not, it's not a large parcel. So it would be very unlikely that we could get both the permanent and the temporary on the same site at one time.
Okay. Thank you. I was just getting excited, you know, because, you know, we kind of own it, so.
Fully understood.
Counselor Dolan.
Yeah, thank you. I want to start off by saying that I'm inclined to, I'm inclined to agree with Counselors Wheeler and Stempel in that I'm not very excited about funding something that we don't know the scope of. I think it's, my priority is to get the temporary fire station in place and get the library, keep the library moving on schedule. And we can, we can work on it as we have kind of plans and more concrete designs. I'm not that excited about approving a budget for a project that we don't have a location for. My question though is related to the grants. I'm aware that we got some significant grants for the library and we've also done some significant fundraising. There was a grant mentioned in the presentation. I was not, maybe I missed it, I was not sure whether that would be coming out of the 15 million or whether that's how we plan to bridge the gap between the 15 million and the 17 million. So I'd also be curious to know if other funding sources are being looked into.
Can answer that, Counselor Dolan, yes. It was not, because we saw that bottom line of closer to $17 million and because we know we have these other costs that we didn't plan for within the 10, we are committed to attempting to find additional money to bridge that gap. One opportunity that we are working on very diligently now, I'm working on with MJ Adams, is the potential to use some portion of a CDB grant. And the reason why we think that we might be able to do that is because both locations, whichever one, for the fire station only, whichever one we end up getting, right now we're working on the Coombs Ave and we'll be shortly working on Maine and Coombs. Our blighted, slum and blighted areas, they're designated under CDBG guidelines as slum and blight areas. And therefore, we could potentially use some portion of, in the hundreds of thousands, not in the millions by any stretch. The maximum of our CDBG grants usually covers in the vicinity of $800,000, $835,000 or thereabouts. So we can certainly, we will certainly pursue the opportunity to do that. Right now, the preliminary information that we know is that, and is that oddly enough, it doesn't seem possible, but the Well Street property is in quote unquote "fair" condition according to CDBG guidelines and therefore would be not suitable for additional, you know, the amount you could spend or request out of a CDBG grant would be less. Whereas the open air market site is a part, is actually viewed as in poor condition and therefore would qualify for additional money. So MJ is working diligently with the, actually, I think it's also again the EOHC D, but a slightly different arm of it, the one that controls the CDBG funds, to determine eligibility. slightly different arm of it, the one that controls the CDBG funds, to determine applicability for certain. And, and then we would go forward with pursuing that grant if it looks that, as if it would be at all favorably looked upon to use some of the money for cleaning up slum and blight areas, which as we know, is important for downtown Greenfield and certainly for the main street corridor. That's one grant. We are also discussing with, and hopefully I'll be meeting with, the rural development section of the USDA, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, from in the Amherst area, to discuss a community and facilities grant that is available through them. Is certainly, we are eligible for that, both as a community of under 20,000 people and a certain level of income guideline. We meet the income guidelines for that. Under that 20,000 threshold, we would be eligible for a 35% grant towards the costs of the building. So that I have a little lesson. I mean, I have all the information on what it means to fund, but I need to have that conversation with, with a fellow whose name escapes me right now. Lyndon is his first name, located in the Amherst area, to get further details and have him help us determine if we are, if it's a likely project that could be funded. They do fund, the USDA funds on a rotating schedule all year long. So it's as money is available. So it's not as if we have to do it within a certain timeframe, which is good news because it'll be the one thing we're not doing immediately. So what I want to say about that is, we don't have, you know, friends of the Greenfield Fire Station arms fundraising for us, but we are certainly committed to attempting to bridge that gap so that we know we can cover any additional costs that may come forward as we are beginning to build the fire station. That's our commitment this evening. They are not certain numbers, as you can well imagine, but right now it's looking good and we would certainly let you know in plenty of what the status of each of those are.
Thank you. A comment from Counselor Jarvis.
Thank you, President Stimple. This is kind of a comment leading into a question. So my comment is, is I'm not sure if I'm really not in favor of allocating the money for this, this project. And here's my reason why. And the question's going to be kind of directed to Neil and Dan, is if we don't fully fund it, what kind of message do we send to the contractors and the general contractors who are going to be bidding on these projects? I know a lot of time and energy goes into it. And were they really, I mean, I think it's going to impede the quality of general contractors that we get that respond to bidding on these projects as they move forward? Because if the city of Greenfield doesn't fully fund it, fund it at the $5 million request, are we sending a message to those guys saying, geez, you know, I'm not going to put my time and effort into it. Maybe you guys can reflect on it, seeing that you deal with the contractors. I know the time and effort that the contractor that I worked for, that when I did the job, the time and effort that goes into it is immense. So I don't know if it sends the wrong message to those people and will we get lesser quality of contractors that may bid on the projects? That's kind of like my questions to Neil and Dan.
I'll go first if you want, Neil, or you can go.
Go ahead, Dan.
First of all, you can't award a contract without a full appropriation. It's against mass general laws. So the city of Greenfield is never going to be at risk of having a half, half-built project. Secondly, the funding for any project usually is done prior to the bids being received, but it's not uncommon to have them come sometimes after bids are received. In Greenfield, with your appeal process, that might not be the greatest idea because you'll be exposing yourself to a contractor, having a late start and going through the process that we went through with the library.
The only thing that I'll add to that is, and I think it hearkens back to some other comments that were made this evening. I think it's very important for, from the designer's perspective, that they understand what they're designing to and what budget mark they're trying to meet. So to defer that decision until documents are complete, I think respectfully to everybody who made that comment, is somewhat putting the horse before the cart again. So I think it's important, once a site is established, we really need to hone in on the budget. We need to establish what a realistic budget is with the site in those conditions known. The site acquisition costs would then be known. It allows us to enter into a full design contract with the architect, which will help us to refine our soft costs as well. I think it's, it can't be established what that number at earliest possible time. And just to echo Dan's comments again, having been a general contractor for almost 15 years, we rarely bid on a project that wasn't funding approved.
Thank you. Counselor Mayo. You are muted, Counselor Mayo.
There we go. Thank you, President Stimple. I just want to dovetail, dovetail on Counselor Gilmore's concern about, and I feel it myself, because I've, I've shared it with my neighbors. And it's information we were told to share with the population, which we did in good faith. And I feel like, in part, I feel like I've hoodwinked the neighbors because we were told certain numbers that were linked to certain projects. And now that money has changed, for good, bad, or whatever, that it has changed. And I have a real concern because obviously I know that every counselor here has had conversations about people's worried about taxes going up, about what are we going to do if COVID goes into the next year? How are we going to fund that? How are we going to fund future projects with unknowns like that? That's kind of my comment part of that. My question to that is, first off, I'm fully in support of, of a fire station and a temporary fire station and, and also the library. I worked hard to get that done. I also work, feel very compelled seeing and doing a walkthrough of the, of the fire department that, that they truly do need one. And if they need a temporary one, obviously that needs to be built too. But I also feel like, and this probably goes back to the last mayor, and he was giving us numbers, hard numbers, and telling us those hard numbers to tell your consumers that this is what it costs. And it turns out that it doesn't cost that, or that we now have lost certain properties. And now we're looking at a whole new ballgame. So I'm a little frustrated and, and feel like I'm hood, I'm hoodwinked and my residents are hoodwinked as well in precinct eight. So I just want to make that comment and perception that that's how I feel like they, they feel like they're being hoodwinked as well.
I also want to, thank you, Counselor Mayo, but I also, so we have limited time left and I want to really reserve space for questions. We're not here debating anything tonight. We're here to learn so that we can debate at a later date. I don't want to limit anything, but I do want to focus on the more questions we ask, the more answers we get, and then that can inform our decision when it comes before us. But I just want to kind of flag that. And by no means am I telling you that you can't make a comment, but I would like for counselors to prioritize questions. Counselor, first, please.
Thank you, President Stimple. Quite a few years ago, the city was looking at a public safety complex. And the city found, I think there were three sites available at the time. And after the first year of looking after these sites, all three were taken off the table because they were bought by other interests. So I would push that we grab whatever site is most available, the Combe Avenue site, and not wait until another year goes by because it may, it may not be there. And then we will find ourselves with any site, any real site. So I would, I would push for that. Hopefully that's, this is, hopefully is in the cards. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Bottomley.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo a little bit of what Counselor Mayo said, is I think trust with the public is extremely important how things unfolded. I don't think I need to talk more about that. But I want to be confident myself. I hear the term real numbers mentioned a lot. And given the way things unfolded, I think it's important that we do have some substantial numbers that the council can feel really confident in that we don't have to deal with multiple appropriations. So I guess my question is, it seems like to have some of those numbers, we would have to have a site secured. So how soon after a site is secured, can some of these other numbers come into play in the budget?
I would suggest Neil help answer that question.
So once we, once we get the site selected, we'll go through a review of the programming that's been established in previous studies for the fire station. And we'll start to develop the schematic cost estimate at that time. And that'll really be our first snapshot of what the overall project looks like on the selected site. And I would expect that that would be maybe two to three months after closing, somewhere in that range. Maybe we might be able to improve that. But I would say that I think that's fairly realistic and very attainable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Forgé, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I guess this would be for Mr. Joyce. In the presentation that we've heard this evening, there was mention of the fact that both you and an architect were on board for this fire station project. My question is, is that true? How did that come about? And who's the architect? And is anything, I mean, is there anything at this point under contract? Are we owing you money at this point? Are you doing it as a preliminary, I don't know, a favor is the right word? But can I understand a little bit more about that startup piece? Thank you.
Certainly. So I have signed a contract with the city for a fire station at the Rydell site. That, that agreement was entered into in, in March or April timeframe. I don't remember exactly when we signed the contract. The architect has not yet been placed under design, although a selection process was completed. The architect that was chosen is Pacheco Ross. They're out of Eastern New York and they have had an extensive period of time. Dennis Ross has been working with the city for over 10 years on the project and has a vast amount of knowledge relative to the project and its history. So that's, I think that's the shortest answer I can provide to your questions.
Can I have a follow-up piece, please?
Please.
Thank you. So you were talking about, this was all in connection with the original site in Rydell, on Rydell Street. Is there a, a rough draft of, of anything? I know we saw the footprint piece tonight, but is there anything that was done in anticipation of the original project, which was the public safety complex? As far as architects? And was there any, to the best of your recollection, was there any understanding that this would be a phased project? And at some point, we'd start with one side of the complex? I'm sorry?
Counselor, I have to apologize. I can't, I can't truly answer that question because my involvement on the project has really been limited since, to a period starting in March. So I can't speak intelligently to what happened prior to that time.
Okay, so March 20 was when you signed?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Counselor Ricketts, please. Penny, you're muted.
Try to never mute myself. Thank you. So the figures and everything that we saw earlier, so if we go with the Coombs Ave, the figures are basically us just taking the fresh air market. Am I correct? Does it have to do with taking over any of the buildings, any of the houses or anything there? Is any of those finances in any numbers that I'm looking at? It's everything?
So the short answer to your question, Counselor, is yes and no. The, the parcel as it was presented, and this is from memory, so I apologize. I think it's for the properties at 12 and 14 Coombs Avenue, as well as one Main Street address. The number escapes me. So the lot becomes L-shaped and there are several structures, some of which are currently residential, but they're all under ownership by the same family or owners, family of owners, if you will.
Okay. And so have they been approached and given us like a, you know, some price on a napkin or something? Or do we know?
They, they, we issued, as required by mass general law for the acquisition of real property, they responded to an RFQ with an asking price. And it is now subject to negotiation between the city and the seller to, to arrive at a mutually acceptable price.
Okay. And so that will be, so I guess the process, I'm just making sure what our process is. So you want us at our next council meeting to maybe vote on this increase of, I'm confused now if it's really going to be 5 million or 7 million. But you're going to. really going to be 5 million or 7 million, but you're going to wait for that vote to finish negotiations with them? Or are you going to start, as the new negotiation's going to start like immediately and before a vote, you'll be letting us know? I don't know who I'm directing it to.
Mayor, you want to take that one?
I can help. Um, answer to your question with regard to what properties are covered, um, yes, the properties that are covered in the RFP that we, we will be responding to are, um, both two on Main Street, the Open Air Market and the adjacent, uh, two family. And then all of the properties on of that, uh, so that's 3539 Main, if I'm not mistaken. There are some greenhouses there, there behind the big greenhouse. There is another two family that's included. Um, and there, um, are, then there's a portion of the property that is on, uh, Coombs Avenue. Uh, don't know if it has any structures on it. I don't believe it does. Um, so those are the ones that we would be responding to. We are not responding to any adjacent properties that are not owned by the owner of people, owner of the, uh, property that responded to the RFP. Um, so that's, that's the answer to that one, which I think actually Neil did, uh, did also answer, but I just wanted to clarify what it is we're talking about. And, um, remind me again, Penny, your next question was?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that all of that was all kind of packaged together because I didn't know if you'd have to come back if you decided, all right, we want this parcel or we decided this is where?
Timing, the timing for this, yeah. The timing for this would be, yes, that I would, I have not yet. Um, I actually have a draft, um, letter of intent to purchase, uh, on my desk to review, and I could begin, um, that negotiation to at least help us arrive at what a, a, a final price would be. Um, and I can begin that, uh, negotiation, um, you know, very soon on that property. Ultimately, when we reach a final cost for that particular property, if we decided to go forward, in other words, hopefully it's a mutually agreed upon cost, um, then we would have to come back to the council, uh, for authorization to spend that amount of money, uh, to purchase that property. Uh, so that would be the process as I understand it, um, for, for the property. And, and when that could occur, I don't, I don't know for sure because I haven't started down the negotiations. Real estate deals have time built into them for due diligence, um, and, um, and other things before you get to a close. But at least this particular offer will be contingent upon, um, final approval for the, the price by the city council. And that's one contingency and would certainly, um, have others in it.
Okay, thank you. And, and my follow-up, if I may, has the fire chief, I mean, everyone has walked it, made their, you know, suggestions, everything. So when, you know, I want the paper that you're going to be giving them to get that final price and everything, not to be like, you know what, it would have been really good if we asked for this one more piece over here. I just wanted to know, like, has all, have all the right people been at the table on this one?
Um, yes, uh, including the architect and, um, project manager Joyce.
Mayor, I can respond to that. Uh, the fire, the fire department, uh, most of the firefighters have been to the site, uh, and, uh, like the location, uh, it has easy access on the Main Street. Uh, I like the location, uh, and I think it's an appropriate place to, for a fire station. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we have a few more questions. I know that this meeting was, the timeframe for this meeting is until 8:45. Um, and so I know that these meetings can last forever and that's not my intention tonight. Um, so I see a few more questions in queue. This isn't the end of questions. You can always think about questions later and submit them. Um, either, I think we agreed, Vice President Wheeler, that they would be submitted to you, uh, for ways and means. Um, so I just wanted to state that. So the questions I see in queue here, ending with Counselor Disorder, is where we'll end. Um, and then please feel free to jot your questions down. And then, of course, all questions will be answered before any action has to be taken. Um, we have Counselor Hirschfeld here next, please.
All right. In terms of, uh, the tenants, uh, who would bear the cost of, uh, relocation? I assume the city would, but, uh, does anyone, uh, has anyone thought of that?
That would be on the property owners and they are aware of that and, and offering that.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, Counselor, uh, Vice President Wheeler, please.
Thank you, President Stempel. Um, I want to first acknowledge, uh, Chief Stran, uh, in his statement earlier and just come back to that and let us kind of reflect on that because I think the, the, the issue, um, that he brought up is real. Um, and the, the question is about timing, I, I think, and details of, um, how many, exactly how many details the council is going to require before it feels comfortable to vote on an appropriation. And I think that that needs a lot more hashing out before, um, we go further in this, but I'm confident that we can navigate it. Um, my question is just, uh, for Mayor Wiedegartner here, um, could you not use the, um, the, uh, take the money for Coombs Ave out of the $10 million appropriation?
Oh, good. I'm not muted. Yes, we certainly could. We certainly could. Um, you know, you have to keep in mind that at the same time, we are also planning to take an additional 1.7, as it stands now, million out for the temporary. So, um, at some point in time, you know, we, we, as I said before, we begin exhausting, um, the availability of our funds. Um, but no, I, we can certainly do that.
Quick follow-up. My, my, where, somewhere that I'm going with that is that I think, or at least I hope, that it might ease some of Chief Strand's concerns if he sees us purchasing real property, um, and taking real, real steps to construct the, the permanent station. Um, so I, I, you know, I, I'm certainly, for myself, would encourage us to pursue that path.
Right. Um, question, final question, um, for Counselor Disorder, and then I would just like to say something.
Why are we timing ourselves?
Thank you. I just have one last question. I, I, I agree with Council and Wheeler that, um, the chief's presentation was awesome and we want a, a good place for our fire, a, a, a great place for our firefighters to be. Um, my last question that I have was, is there any money that's left from the library or from, dare I say, this library donations that might be sent our way? Uh, I'm, an idea to say it now, I'm going to mute myself.
Probably ought to mute your ears, too.
Counselor, would you like me to try to attempt to answer that question?
Well, I don't.
Um, we won't really know the answer to the question on that, um, for a while. Um, but the goal is to never spend the entire appropriation so that you don't have to bond it. Um, and you can rescind that portion of the bond when the project is completed. So, uh, we will, we will know that, uh, a little further down the line. As of today, we're right on target to the 19 million and change that you appropriated, uh, a year or so ago.
All right, thank you. Um, again, if folks have additional questions, please capture those and make sure that they're sent. Um, you know, I'm going to have you send them to the clerk. Um, this way we can expedite them to the project, the building project managers, so we can have them answered in time for our next meeting. Um, the next steps for council would be to receive for a first reading, any additional requests for appropriation. So we would not be voting on anything in October. We would just, I mean, in September, we would, we would maybe have a first reading. So that's there. And I think a lot of the questions, what I just wanted to quickly wrap up this portion, we still have business after this, which is a first reading. Um, what I just wanted to address is that a lot of the questions that I heard from counselors, um, are no different than questions I've heard for, uh, other projects, um, E.G. the Senior Center, Community Center. And I think what we're missing is some type of either a visual or a Gantt chart or something that just shows us what we can expect to be accomplished in terms of milestones for each project. Somebody kind of hit it on the head earlier where, uh, I believe one of our project managers kind of alluded to what the next steps from here would be. Um, I'd be curious to know, so where do we go from here? You gave us this information. What are you going back to do, um, in regards to moving us closer, moving that needle closer? Um, so we can know, like, if we allocate money, where is it going? What is it going to do? So I feel like we always miss that, whether it's a visual or whether it's, uh, an Excel sheet. I don't know, but I just feel like without us knowing where the project, I'm not saying we need to micromanage anything, but you can't just expect to come before, say, we need another additional five without saying, all right, so we looked at properties and we hope by this date, this is our drop dead date for knowing a site. This is our drop dead date for knowing a site for, uh, temporary. We need to know that information so we can know when, when and where the money's going. Um, I don't know if I'm just speaking for myself because that's how my brain works, but a lot of these questions could have been answered with that type of a visual. And I'm curious if that would be available to us by next week. Some type of like a milestone chart.
Yeah, we could certainly take a, a, well, let me speak first, please. We could certainly take a stab at it on the, uh, fire station side. Um, some of that was given to you in Neil Joyce's, um, presentation with regard to the length of time to, um, put together, you know, to per, uh, purchase the apparatus, equipment, uh, the, the necessary storage, the necessary, um, uh, facilities, uh, and construct them and get the, the council, I mean, the fire station moved in. Um, so that can certainly be part of a timeline. Um, I can't imagine that I would give you an outside drop dead date for, I mean, a accurate on the money drop dead date for the purchase of the fire station property, permanent property. Um, but, but, uh, you know, we have timelines built in to the agreement, and I can certainly give you a, a target date for having, um, um, a firm price, uh, in order to bring it to the council, um, in the near future. Uh, so, um, I'm trying to think if what else we may need, maybe, uh, if it was Dan or if it was Neil would need to, uh, chime in on that. Uh, are you looking for both library and fire station in a timeline, separately or together?
We, we, we do, we do have a timeline that we can send over to, uh, the president, uh, for distribution or the clerk for distribution. Um, that was done prior to the fire station, um, acquisition of land. So it would have to be updated, but it'll only take a day or two to update with those, with, with, with the new dates. Um, so we'll be happy to do that on the, uh, lib, on the library side. Uh, but the important date for the library is that we're going to be, uh, we're going to be bidding in March. I mean, that, everything, everything steps back from March. Uh, and, uh, the, the, the question of when we start construction is really the only date that's unknown, uh, whether, whether the, the mayor and the city can get an extension from the embezzler or not, uh, or whether, or whether we can, uh, award the contract with a delay. Um, you know, one thing's important is that the fire station building committee, uh, is committed by creating the subcommittee, uh, of getting the temporary station moving along. So that's, that's really important.
Thank you. And yeah, and, and even if it's just, like I said, like milestones with, with loose framed, like Q1, Q4, like, I don't think any of us need exact dates and we're completely understanding that there may not be, but just even understanding like what comes next, um, in, in the schematics of everything, just so that we know where we're headed, you know, because constituents do want to know. And I want to make sure that everyone here on this call has the information that they need in order to, to parlay the information that people are asking for. Um, not that we need to be project managers. Thank you. And again, to counselors, please continue sending questions and thinking of them, uh, and we will get answers for you. Um, I'm going to wrap up this portion of the meeting and thank you to members of the public who came to listen. The information firsthand appreciated, as always. Um, with that being said, we do have one more order of business on our agenda tonight, um, and that is a first reading. So without further ado, I'm going to pass the microphone over to Vice President Wheeler, um, to read that for us.
Thank you, President Stempel. City Council First Reading, September 10th, 2020. Appropriate $21,000 from Fund 8402 Capital Stabilization to Repair DPW Yard Boiler.
Great. Um, that is all we have. So do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move, Disorder.
Second mail?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions. All right, meeting is adjourned at 8:34 PM. I want to also thank the mayor's office, Director Gilman, as well as both project managers for hanging in there with us and answering all of our questions.
Thank you, and please feel free to continue the questions. I would like to say this, if I could. Um, if you are at all interested in what it means to move into a temporary, the temporary Fire Station Building Committee held its first meeting today, which was recorded, and Chief Stran, uh, gave a very good presentation on what would be required in that temporary and what, what, what it means for the fire department to be in a temporary for any length of time. So I'm happy to share that recording with you in whatever the best way to do that is. Um, and I can certainly do that, um, as soon as I figure it out. I think that'll be easy enough to do. I have lots of help when I can't figure it out myself.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
You as well. Thank you.
Good night.
Night, everybody. Night, everybody. Otis, if you just close the meeting, it will kick us all out.
You got it.
All right, thank you.